In the phase in both they, you know, on the in a practice, in a 3D as well as into the 5D realm. So I was excited about bringing that in, starting off and grounding in into kind of a ritual practice with rock, with the rocks and the rites of conduction, how we conduct ourself within the community is a kind of a base flow. Onboarding and going into this self-discovery portals and self-reflection portals and just kind of like moving up the tree of, the tree from root to crown. And I, and each one being a gate. So I, and if we would like to go to any, the screen share, I'm on, on my phone because I don't have the access to the computer at the moment. But if we could, if you want to pull that up out of the shared docs, if anyone would like to pull it up, I can guide us through.
Uh, I can try. It's in the, it's in the shared docs?
Yes. I dropped that in yesterday because I wasn't sure if I was going to be able to be here in today's flow, so I'm glad I am. So I was leaving that with Stephen to go into, into the flow.
Which, which doc?
Uh, I think it's in the onboarding. I believe I put it into the onboarding.
Perfect.
If I did that correctly.
Great. Which one? This thing?
Yeah, there you go. The, the rainbow, boom. Yep.
Alright, there it is.
Awesome, thank you. Pulling that up. So as an acronym, you see is Mount Zion. And so Mastering, Mastering Transformation, Zodiarchetypal Initiations of Nature. It's like a, a space coming into, saying be, uh, develop this in like, creating this space for this to go down in like a play shop workshop, uh, situation. And so we can bring that around to all communities essentially and drop in. And it would take everyone through these self-reflective portals of avatarism. So kind of goes through the rainbow. So this would be like, kind of just showing the front page. So if you want to click and then go on to the next, then it'll go right into the root and we'll move from there up. This is a quick rundown through each, each level. Will be a different process of initiation into it that opens up in the all fields. So there'd be essentially an affirmation that comes along with each one as well in the practice. So going into red is, these are the principles, the principal symbols that have come from Burning Man and that transformational experience. So those, those principles, symbols in looking at literally a ritual practice, even a sweat and going through the four endurances and meditation to bring those symbols in and into alignment. So is that kind of be a grounding way, a community practice, you know, uh, dissolve any barriers in, in language, you know, any language barriers to where in complete communication by using these ancient future symbols. And so that first page is come in and line and like sign in, you know, and coming into the agreement field of these are, these are our principles of conduction, our ethos. And name, date, all of that opens up then into like the self-reflective portal so that we can then work into looking at their astrology, eastern, western, Egyptian astrology, uh, using these wheels and the like wheel of co-creations they can choose into, um, what type of art, artists that they are in the flows. Uh, each page has a link on it to like go into that self-reflective portal so you can just, if you want to go on and take themselves through that as part of their initiation process, their ignition process. And so basically coming in, uh, to that, so they'll look at their, also their Mayan oracle dream spell aligning with that and coming into awareness of, of that astrology, their human design type, their gene keys, their natal charts. Then coming into alignment with peace, love, unity movement and loving themselves and all life beyond conditions and forming into a full like emissary of light and love. And then synergizing with the rest of the squad here. As a black belt. So thinking almost in this terms is kind of like going through this initiation process like in a martial arts flow where it's like you get these, uh, these belts, these shirts, these patches and things to upgrade through and then coming into a full like black rainbow belt. And to the Gaia's agreements. And other just some four like questions to help cultivate the conversation moving forward into the, uh, once coming into that, that field and gone through those seven agreements in that tree, those seven gates then going in, uh, to, now you have that information, you can go into your personal introduction phase. So having that individualized introduction into who we are in these questions here.
Awesome.
Any questions at all?
Um, was that something that you and, I have a question. Uh, you and, you and Stephen came up with together or is that just you or?
That's, that's me right there in coming up with that together. And so I shared that document with Stephen in our first conversation for, you know, that we had together and, um, learning about each other was kind of the last thing and we shared, you know, shared the same docs. So that was shared to him and I wanted to also share that into this group and, uh, allow for that to start to transmit and process through. Let's run that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brittany, do you want to give a update from you and, um, Robert, Robert?
Yeah, I can do that. Um, I just to piggyback, that's something that Jonah and I have kind of been, I mean, he has definitely filled out a lot of the, the framework for that, but we've even together, um, some of that, you know, you mentioned the self-reflection portal. And so, yeah, I just wanted to speak into that a little bit. And then let's see here. Yeah, working with Robert, um, we kind of went over the documents that you sent the other day. And do you mind screen sharing that real quick just to trigger my memory? I can't really remember. It's like the document you shared that is kind of like, hey, guys, we got kind of off track with, um, you know, the Synergy Hub group and. Yeah.
No.
Okay, so, yeah. I'll just unpack again. Okay. So. Yeah, could you scroll down like to the, um, like objective of this meeting? Yeah. Okay. So let's take steps together. Um, okay, the thing is with, um, yeah, we were talking about the 80 hours or 40 or 20 or whatever. As far as things that, you know, as a sort of like coming in and, in a way kind of proving that you want to be here. But then also kind of weaving in what Jonah was just talking about, it would be really cool, maybe there's some time or hours that we could track. But I would like to consider reframing in a sense that we have these milestones, you know? So like just to keep the, the awareness or, or, uh, whatever around gamifying it, making it fun, more playful for people, you know, even in the onboarding. So like what are the incentives and what do they win when they accomplish a step? That's just kind of something that we were, um, we were discussing. And, yeah. As far as team building, um, I also wanted to propose people, I can drop a message in the chat too, just to have people, um, dropping their birth information. And I've been collecting different people's charts, just, um, some basic, you know, like human design and gene keys. Our thing was team building. And so, um, there was that aspect of it of just like clarity of self, you know, that's being built out in the self-reflection portal, but also turning those mirrors around, you know, from self to other and, um, co-creating that resonant field. It's helpful to know different people, um, people's design, you know, like Josh, you and, and Robert are both projectors. So like, what does that mean? And like, who are the generators? Jonah is a reflector and for me to know that, it's been really helpful. I know not everybody's going to want those tools, but I think in team building, we're, um, we're collecting those resources, you know, and it's like you, each person, maybe that's one of the milestones that we set is choose, choose your team building exercises, you know? Um, I have the blueprint of we that I can drop in the shared resources. That's just something simple that, you know, you explore when you're doing a project with somebody, just so you know, like what their triggers are and, um, you know, what happens when they're really motivated and how to support me in that best and the best way possible for me, you know? So just kind of, we were just exploring those different ways of, of supporting each other. Yeah.
Awesome. Oh. Oh. Yum.
Yum.
Okay, well, I can give ours and then that makes all three teams, six people. Unless you want to, Christina.
Oh, yeah, you can go ahead.
Yeah.
Basically, we were just talking about the website for like two hours.
Yeah. Yeah, we kind of, we kind of, um, got this, this call here planned and decided we needed to just pitch in and get the website done. So we have me, Christina and Steve willing to just put something in to get it going. And, um, that's part of this meeting is we're gathering the whole team and saying, you know, let's, let's get the website done so that we can have some income, some traction, something to bring people in, some onboarding, people can come in, we can all open the gates and have everything ready. The second thing, um, yeah, i- in that process, we, we're at a somewhat delicate time where, you know, it's, it's, I, I just wanted to invite whoever really wanted to show up. So instead of saying, hey, you know, here's another chance to come in, I just kind of mentioned, hey, who on level two, you know, is interested for, for, for a revamp? That way, we've got a really good, solid team and we're, um, you know, we're not, we're not having to train new people constantly that aren't going to really show up. Let's just put it that way. That's, 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 we just now got finished with training on the Synergy Hub. There was a couple, Jonah and Robert and Stephen were all new. And so, um, I, we got to realize that that, 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 that team building section, so there's onboarding, which happened. Jonah, you went through the onboarding and you did all the paperwork and, you know, got aligned and all that. And then we had a, um, the end part of the alignment process is like jumping on a team and committing and going, okay, we're a part of a team. So that happened and we kind of all kind of, kind of committed. And then we got into team building, like, okay, we're committed to Synergy Hub. And so we basically for the last, I think we've only had like one meeting a week because if you look at our, if you look at our calls, we, I've recorded each call this time, that way we each email. It's not here, it's in, it's in, let me look. I think there's only like, level three. In the Synergy Hub is what we've been building. We've had, one, two, three, four meetings. This is the fourth. We've only had four meetings. We must have only had like one a week. So we've kind of like canceled pretty much each week, like it's pretty much been one a week. Which I think is nice. It's been the holidays and I think it's, maybe it's nice to schedule two and ends up being one, I don't know. But, okay, so the point being in those four, it took about four calls of like focused calls, if we can like really boil it down to three, great. But I think that the team building process, I think we're figuring out takes about four good, solid team calls to, that's what it took us. So there's a, a marker, a milestone, like if we were going to like, you know, set teams out to, to, to team build, you know, about four calls is what we can start with. So that's it. That's all the catch-ups. That's all, is there anything else you want to add to that, Christina?
Well, thank you. Pretty much covered it. Yeah, I'm, I'm all for pitching in and getting the website done because I know that's like a big part of the onboarding process. And every time we, every time I'm trying to kind of figure out graphically what, you know, what we can show for onboarding, it's like, it just keeps coming back to the website or how the platform's going to look. So, but yeah, I totally resonate with what Jonah presented and Brittany and it sounds awesome to like gamify it and just make it fun.
Yeah. All right, let's move into the mastermind part. So this is, uh, it says Culture Code Mastermind. I don't really know if we've figured that exactly what that looks like out. We could just do like a hand raise if you want to speak and, and I guess this is kind of an open floor and Paul, this is for everyone now. We just wanted to catch that up. We have Stephen Jenner and Paul in addition to us. And the items we're going to go over is revamping teams. So I think as we pop through this website thing, once we're past the website, we can onboard our friends and family a little easier and have, and, and build teams. And now that we have six team builders, at least five, I'm not sure if Robert really was present, but I think everyone else that was there this last four meetings can, could, but, but Robert's pretty good anyway, but we, maybe just a little bit of, um, we could, we could basically, Ike, I mean, I, do you feel confident? You guys feel confident in running a team? If you had to, copying those four first calls that we had, doing the same thing with a team?
Yes.
Getting to where you're all up and going? Okay. So basically we can now, um, form all the teams we want for Gaia plus, you know, whatever.
Whatever, Josh.
Whatever. Okay, that's not what I wanted to say. Here's what I want to say. Through this next phase until we get completed, I, how I see it, and this is, this is the open discussion part. I was before seeing it as, as individual circles working together on specific pieces. And that's how we've been moving forward. And it's worked because it's, it's allowed me focus because I've been kind of, you know, having to like start the circles. Now that I think we can start circles on our own, plus now, I think now might be like a hibernation phase where we all kind of come together on a, like, like a core circle. And instead of circle, 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 circle of like four or five people, since they're, we, we just have like two, teams of two, because it's easier to get together and complete pieces. What do you guys, that's what I'm thinking for the next phase until we get more people. What do you guys think?
Uh-huh. So I'm hearing you say is we need, uh, we're going to work in our groups of two at this junction point that we're here now, pulling those, uh, and bringing our circles together as we are, it's just like, and we also are ready to, are we ready to bring in some more people into alignment, uh, with that agreement field into this group? As we were sharing that, I was seeing this, uh, Earth Synergy Wheel and like, you know, being in this group right now, uh, which circles are we leading? You know, if those were teams, so we took each one of those and dropped in, we'd be focused in that circle, you know, or in those two circles. So we each are choosing into two, two to three circles anyways, what are those circles?
Yeah, that's, 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 that's it. And so as part of the roles and goals, which we haven't formed yet, me and Brittany are going to do that, the master plan. It really, there's a piece of it that's experimental that we, we, and this is what we're doing right now, but, but it really, it helps everyone communicate. So when those teams of two come together and they share information so that the living system can understand what's going on everywhere, so that we're all on the same page, you know, or at least the whole body is able to understand, what does that look like? And that's what, um, that's what we want to, we want to move from wherever we're at into a state of coherency in that, in that regard of communication. So I don't, I don't know what that looks like either, but that's why we're kind of talking about that right now. How, when we can come back together and talk, how often is that? When people, you know, if someone didn't show up with homework, what does that mean for the whole? Does that mean, you know, just kind of like, how do we move forward so that it stays, uh, so that we're moving forward, we're not like getting stuck? You, you have me?
So the suggestion I have on that is to break our weeks down, you know, in those seven days and thinking about using our color codes to hold that space. So if we have each day of the week represent a particular color, you know, that is holding a like, okay, it's like we were talking about two sections, so we have 12 in that, in the Synergy Wheel. So we think about our six points, you know, that then each point has two, uh, team leads holding that point will kind of open up into those two circles. And so like on Monday, you know, you'd have a team that come in and hold this, hold this meeting and go into the specifics of where that project lies, where it is in its current evolution and do that throughout the week. So you have all six teams which would take care of the whole 12 individually, you know, with their own individual spaces. And then on the seventh day of the, of that week, it'd be the, uh, all teams coming together, you know, for a full Gaia conversations. So you have one day a week, we have the full team and the rest of the week is teams holding that specific space. And those that want to come in, collaborate, support and be part of that team know which day to, to tune in, which day and time, we have a specific day and time. Red team's on Monday, orange team's on Tuesday, yellow team and just move through, the chalk is already through. And then rainbow, you know, at the end. So we have a weekly rainbow council meeting. Oh. Yum.
Yum. I like it. So this is what we can, we can, uh, when we get, when we form the, the master plan for the roles and goals, just like the Culture Code, like we can like have these different possible ways of doing things and we can, uh, we, we, I would like to map that out with you. We'll, we'll, we'll call you in, me and, me and Brittany will call you in, unless you want to do the whole thing with us, that's cool too.
Yep. Yeah.
Anyone have, anyone else have any ideas on, on, especially until we get like a larger number of people? Anything that you see as, um, helpful in our moving forward and when we meet, how often we meet, who we meet with, blah, 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 whatever? Anything you guys see? Paul and Stephen Jenner, do you guys, um, what, what do you, what do you want to see for yourself? Do you want to, what do you guys want to see for yourself in the next month or two while we're, while the site's getting built and we're all kind of pitching in on onboarding and we're all going to kind of get prepared for launch, let's just call it?
I would say at the moment, I think I would be more helpful in a supportive role for the next month or two. Rather than being a team leader, just because I, I do have more time, but I, I have more things going on than I anticipated. So I don't want to, um, have an issue where I'm not able to provide all the, all the support I can as a team leader. So I'll, I'll be more of a, um, like a support role or what needs to be done.
Cool. I know I can use that every once in a while, so sometimes I like to just have support. Great. Stephen, are you able to talk right now? He might, I haven't seen or heard from him yet, so he might just be vibing or something.
Hey, sorry about that. Couldn't get my audio on.
Loud and clear now.
That's okay. Uh, how do you see yourself, Stephen, in the next month or two while we're getting ready for launch? What do you want to do? How do you want to come in? What are you thinking just in general?
Well, I can, I can give quite a bit of time into this project for sure. And, uh, I don't have a problem. I can work with people and I can lead projects. So, you know, whatever, whatever somebody wants to do, whoever wants to work with me, I, I don't have a problem with it. I'm, I'm pretty open. And I'm pretty versatile too. I see how the project lays out, I see what we're doing. I, I recall, you know, our projects, we've worked on Project Synergy and, yeah, I'm just, I'm pretty wide open on this, so.
Awesome. Okay. Cool, cool. All right, so we'll, we'll, uh, I, like I said, I think that, that us, like you said, Jonah, and so, so far the two things we've said are pretty much the same. It's like come together at least once a week as a whole, whole, and then make sure that just everyone's meeting in between on a team or two or three, depending on what they want to take on. Yeah? Cool. All right, so what we need to do is, is.
Thinking about that.
Go ahead. One of us froze. Was me.
It, it's low, then when we have new onboarding coming on, they can just click into the particular team who they've synergized with. So if we are clear like what team we're currently leading or supporting, then we can, it's like that person, it's like we, we essentially are the portal and that gate. So it's like they come through each one of us in that initiation and have access to the, the rest, you know, through that portal. So there's not necessarily a starter. So it's not necessarily a starting point, but the incentive is to, uh, gear all the way up to, you know, to have all rainbow, all, all rainbow initiations, you know, gone through each process.
Can we start another meeting? Uh, maybe, maybe Brittany? Happy birthday.
Yeah, I can, I'll, I'll drop the link.
Okay, let's jump back on there. I'll see you guys in a second.